It is 1:30. I will go ahead and call this afternoon's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item is to approve the agenda. If I might, we will remove...
Seven.
Item number seven from the agenda.
Move to approve with the correction.
Motion to approve an amended agenda from Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Employee recognitions. Tracy, do you want to come up?
Nancy, do you want to come too?
Tracy, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition for the 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for your work. Thank you. There you go, Nancy.
I just want to congratulate Tracy on her 20 years of service to Clay County. Tracy's been in the Assessor's Office her whole work career here with Clay County, and she's very dedicated and committed to great customer service, so we're very thankful for that. She's also kind of our lead person for counter and phone, so she's the face of the Clay County Assessor's Office. So congratulations, and I hope you have many more years to come.
Thank you. Congratulations. Mark Sloan. Peanut gallery back there today. Mark, today this plaque is given to you in grateful recognition for the 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do.
It's been an honor.
Steve, are you?
Yes, happy to. I think dedicated, loyal, hardworking, those are all things that first adjectives that pop to your head when you think of Mark. He comes every day with a can-do positive attitude, so it's a great example for his staff to follow. He's also, as was alluded to, the peanut gallery, he's also our county historian. I think anything that's happened in Clay County of any significance, Mark generally has that knowledge and base to get you up to speed with where you're at. And so I want to thank Mark for all the great work, and congratulations on 25 years.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the citizens-to-be-heard portion. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on anything not on the agenda? None. Steve, have you had any correspondence in regards to this item?
I have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The approval of the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Gross makes a motion to approve the payment of bills and vouchers, a second offered from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The minutes from the board meeting held June 21st were included.
Move for approval.
Motion from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the June 21st meeting minutes.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. The June 28th, 2022 minutes.
Move approval.
Motion from Commissioner Campbell to approve the 28 minutes.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. This morning, or afternoon, sorry, we'd like to acknowledge a donation from Scandia Lutheran Church for our work detail supplies given to the Clay County Corrections Facility, a $50 donation. Thank you so much to...it's actually the Scandia Lutheran Church welka. So thank you so much for that. Item two is our budget presentation from our Information Services Director, Mark Sloan. Hello.
Good afternoon. Chair, better. Good afternoon. It's my privilege to come before you once again and talk about our budget for the 2023 year. Information Service is a small but mighty department. We get involved in a lot of different things across a lot of different organizations, and we're able to do quite a bit with the resources we have. Our budget for the next year is pretty straightforward. We didn't make any new requests. We're just having a couple minor increases. The only, the biggest one would be in our software line item, and the reason for that is we have an enterprise license agreement with ESRI that comes up every three years. It'll be up next spring, so sometime this fall I'll be here to talk about it. But that license agreement is tied to population, and we grew in the last census, so that pushes our cost up a little bit. Besides that, we try to keep everything as flat as we could. We're very cognizant of the dollars we're allowed to expand, and we try to do our very best to be good stewards of the taxpayers' funds. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. One thing I want to talk about, that our department, GIS specifically, is responsible for, it's not on our budget, but you'll see it in some other budget later, is the section corner remonumentation program. It's actually funded with money from the Recorder's Compliance Fund, but it will show up somewhere. So I put together a little handout for you all. It looks like this, a little page with lots of dots all over it. Put it on your desk. Just a quick status update of that project and where it's sitting. At some point in the time, if you ever wanted me to come and give a whole presentation about what exactly remonumentation consists of, we'd be happy to do that also. But just so you know, the section corner remonumentation program is a contractual agreement we have with AE2S for the surveyors to go out and re-monument section corners. In Clay County, we have 3,559 corners, and as we go through them, what we're looking for is for the corner to be in present so that people, surveyors specifically, can use it, and that we also like to have that recorded in the Recorder's Office. There's actually a certificate that's recorded with each corner, and the other piece of information we need is coordinates on the corner so that we can tie our mapping to it. And on the little map you've got there, the red triangles are ones that are, none of that's existent on, or we're really trying to target, get those over time, and the big green circle or dots are ones we finished, totally done. Remonumentation is complete. We've got 1,222 of them complete, if I didn't already say that, so we're about a third of the way done. Rule of thumb is the corners cost about $1,500 apiece, so if you start doing some math, it becomes some really big numbers. So the $40,000 or so we're spending a year is going to take us a while. But it's, I think it's a really good program, and it really helps with a lot of things. You can actually see on there where we've been targeting the areas along the eastern edge of the county in the last few cycles. Eglin Park, Tansom, and Humboldt is where we've been. Just so happens those are the most, we had the least amount of information there, plus they happen to be the most expensive part of the county to do survey work in. It's very rugged terrain, lots of woods, swamps. There's actually an area called the Black Swamp that they weren't able to survey until it froze. A lot of issues like that, which makes the remonumentation project much more challenging. So as we come out of that part of the county, as we get into some of the flatter townships, it's going to go quicker. We'll get more bang for our dollar because it takes less work to get to those corners. So we'll continue with that project as long as we can until we slowly get them all, is what we're trying to do. With the remonumentation program, we've been specifically targeting the east edge of the county because there's the least amount of activity there. In the western two-thirds of our county, there's quite a bit of other stuff going on, and you'll see a bunch of green dots there, but those are all done not as our remonumentation project. They're being done by other crews doing other things, like road projects and diversion stuff, and a bunch of other stuff going on, ditches. So we're getting those without having to expend funds. So we're really targeting the areas where we know there's not projects coming up where we're going to have to, have to go about spending some dollars to get those done. So that's, I just thought I'd give you a quick update on that project. I think the way we're running it now is really beneficial to our staff and our citizens so that if anybody ever had to do any survey work out there, it's going to save them quite a bit of money because those corners exist.
I just want to give a shout out to Tansom because it looks like they're the only township that's completely done, and they're in a pretty cool district of Clay County, too.
Yes, that they are.
Anything else?
I'd like to talk about my district.
Mark, I just also, I know this isn't necessarily on the agenda today, but want to give thanks to your department, specifically you, for the work that you did in regards to the redistricting and response to the census. Thank you so much for your leadership and all the information that you provided, not only Clay County, but I know that you really were a go-to for all of our cities within the counties. So thank you so much for that, and you're also continuing to serve on the ARPA Committee, so thank you as well.
You're welcome.
For that work. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much, Mark. The next item on the agenda today is a request for approval of an employee referral program. HR Director Darren Brooke will be presenting. Carrie's up here as well, from the jail, and this is a discussion we can allude to later that did, there was substantial discussion at PIC as well.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We did have this discussion at the PIC, and it was recommended that we brought it forward to the full board. And so I have a few notes here, and hopefully, if you have any questions afterwards, I can answer them. And with the tight job market and a shortage of employees, especially in our 24/7 operations, the board's always acknowledged in the past that the workforce shortage and recruiting difficulties to fill those open positions. And I'm here with Carrie because she's one of the departments that we really have a hard time filling those positions in. I'm here to propose a new pilot program to attract new talent while rewarding existing employees. This program is designed to encourage and incentivize existing employees to recruit new employees for Clay County's 24/7 operations. It is hoped that if the program is successful, program may be expanded to more Clay County departments in the future, and the intent is that the program will be evaluated after six months and reevaluated a year later to determine its effectiveness. So as of right now, the current shortage of employees in the 24/7 operations are the juvenile center is down to two full-timers and about 20 variable-hour employees. Corrections is 14 correctional officers short, and four of those are currently in the hiring process, and hopefully if they complete that hiring process, they'll be down by 10 full-time correctional officers. Detox is down approximately two full-timers and a few variable-hours, and law enforcement's down two deputies right now, but they're interviewing one deputy right now, so they might only be down one if they get through the whole hiring process. I was tasked to look at ways of improving recruitment and retention, and so there's several ways that I looked at that. One way would be higher wages, of course, starting people at a higher step, grade adjustments, sign-on bonuses, increased benefits, extended advertising methods, and a quicker hiring process. Some of these methods we've already implemented, like the hiring people at a higher step, or extending our advertising methods, which we use now, governmentjobs.com, which goes out countrywide, actually. And we're also looking at ways to decrease our time to hire because, you know, if you offer somebody a job, they don't want to wait a month or two to get, you know, working. So, and what we're looking at right now is a new recruiting and onboarding software system called Applicant Stack, which I'll discuss in my budget brief, which is coming up after this, I believe. The other thing is we'll have a booth at the county fair this year for the first time. HR will have a booth there. And I actually have something for you. I think I left it back there. Let me go get it real quick. You saw, you know what it is, right? And so Mandy Olson did a great job of putting these little flyers together that we can hand out, and she only gave me five of them, so I only have five for the commissioners. Sorry, sorry, Colleen. I'll probably get you one later. So when we've, on our application, we've asked the questions, how did you hear about Clay County? And a lot of times, it's through friends or family. And so what we wanted to do was take advantage of that, and we thought this might be a way of increasing the applicant net while rewarding our current employees. You know, during the PIC, we talked about, you know, sign-on bonuses and stuff like that, and there wasn't really a lot of traction for that. But if there's ways that we can reward our current employees by bringing in new employees, that would certainly help everybody. So the highlights of the programs would be that any and all current employees of the county can refer a new employee to one of the 24/7 operations. And to do that, the current employee would receive $1,000 to recruit new full-time and part-time employees for our 27-hour operations. So that $1,000 would be given out, $500 after the six months of employment, and another $500 after one year of employment. We also thought that since a lot of our 24/7 operations used variable-hour employees, that that would also be a good way of attracting some variable-hour employees. And so they would get a total of $500, which would mean that they would get $250 after 400 hours of employment, and then another $250 after a total of 800 hours of employment. Because we track variable-hours by hours of employment and not necessarily days or months of employment. So those were the two aspects of the incentive. Some of the other things that we talked about in the program is that both the recruited employee and the recruiter employee must be active employees at the six-month and one-year mark in order to get the incentive. Current employees can recruit more than one person, but if two current employees recruit the same person, then the incentive money will be, would be split. The recruited employee will be asked who their recruiter was during the in-processing process. Department heads would not know if that person was recruited or not because we don't want any bias in the hiring process. And so that kind of gives a fair shake to those that are recruited and those that are just applying and interviewing on their own. The new employee must remain in good standing and active for the recruiter to be awarded the incentive. Management has sole responsibility to determine the continued employment or the termination of the recruited employees. If the recruited employee leaves employment before the six-month period, then the incentive would not be paid out. So this is kind of an incentive for both the new employee to stay, but also for the recruited, the recruiter employee to make sure that that employee is going to stay. Because if they don't stay for the six months, then the incentive would not be paid out. Management and the department's head would determine final staffing levels. So once they reach 100%, that they have 100% of their people, they would not continue to hire, and they would not have to be paying out the incentive as well. The employee referral program is considered a pilot program and can be discontinued at any time. The thing is that if those employees have recruited somebody, let's say after six months, and then the board decides that this is not working, and we cancel the program after eight or nine, 10 months, anybody that was recruited during that timeframe would still get the other $500 incentive once they reached that one-year mark and they accomplish all the outlines of the job. Elected officials are not eligible to receive referral funds. Steve put that in there. And last but not least, we're hoping that if the board approves this, that the referral program would begin on July 15th, 2022, and end upon being rescinded by the county board. So we'd like to do this, review this at six months and 12 months, see if it is going to work, if we're having great success for it, with it, maybe expand that to other departments that are having a hard time hiring within Clay County. The 24/7 operations that we're talking about is Corrections, Law Enforcement, Juvenile Attention, and Detox, and those are the departments that we're looking at right now. So I am, at this point, open for your questions unless, Carrie, you have anything else.
I think Commissioner Gross might have a comment, but Carrie, after that, I'd like to talk a little bit about what the openings are costing us and why we're coming about this. But at first, let's have Commissioner Gross.
You had a question on hiring someone at a higher step. Say you hired someone under this program here, give them $500, another $500 later on. Would they be the one hired at the higher step two, or are they eligible for that, too?
No, whatever they're hired on wouldn't make a difference for the incentive. What step that they're hired on would have more to do with what experience they're bringing to the job. So if somebody's coming in with 10 years of experience as a correctional officer, you might hire them at a step two or three, but the person that is recruiting that person would still get the $500 and the $500 at the end of one.
How does that work out when you hire someone at a higher step, and you hired another person six months ago at step one? Is there any problems with that?
No, I don't think so because we do that right now anyway with people that are coming in with more experience. So if you have no experience and you're selected for a position, you're going to be hired at step one. But if you're coming in and you say, say you have five years of experience as a correctional officer, you may be hired at step two or three. That really doesn't impact on the incentive of the recruiting employee that's bringing that person in and saying, I'm going to recruit this guy. Whether they're hired at one, step one or step three, it really is immaterial at that point.
This is a little bit separate to what the step and the hiring steps would be. This specifically is to address the habitual openings.
And the current employees. It would be the current employees incentive, not necessarily the...you may be thinking, if we hire, this is all just for current employees that are already active employees. The person that's being recruited, there would be, there would be no incentive for them. They don't get the 500 and the 500. Maybe that's where I was misunderstanding you. The recruited employee doesn't get the 500 and 500. But if after a year, they recruit somebody else, then they would be eligible for the $1,000.
Probably I was understanding that wrong. I thought the person getting hired gets the $500.
No, no, just the, just the active employees that have recruited that person.
Thank you.
Yep.
Carrie?
Yes.
You explained so well to us at the PIC Committee in regards to, we've all been scratching our heads how to deal with major workforce shortages, and specifically in your department that can really affect the budget line with a staffing pattern that is not completely full, really changes the dynamic in terms of who we can have at the facility and who we may need to send to additional counties. Can you talk a little bit about this?
Right. I think right now, if we stay where we're at number-wise, I should not have to ship out. But if we continue to lose people, which we tend to do more so during their probationary period, which tends to be within the six months is kind of what we're finding, is when they either don't make it, or for whatever reason, if it's, they decide it's not for them, or they're just not making it through our program. That number can stay at 14, but that's our, kind of our bare minimum right now, where we would have to not be able to get people their time off that they're requesting, which we don't want to do because all that's going to do is motivate people to leave. So we can't end up doing that. If we can get this number, like I said, down to like even six or five, then we can start reopening different pods. And if we can open up those different pods, then eventually, my endgame goal is to make money by housing people from other counties. Instead of us housing, having to house out, we can house in. So our budget right now obviously is drastically affected right now by our salaries because we're not able to get those filled right now. And if we can get those filled, then it can be the opposite, where we can create revenue.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Do we have active recruiting going out to job fairs, whatever, where we send employees? And if so, would they be eligible, they're doing this as part of their assignment, would they be eligible if the recruit names them as having recruited them in?
Well, I know that Carrie just went out on a recruiting tour as well.
Yep. Katie and I just went out to Alexandria Skills Fair, and we didn't get a whole lot of traffic, but it was still great to get out. Who knows down the line. It's different with skills employees because it depends on whether they pass their post or not, whether they can go out on patrol. If they can't pass that, then generally they start in Corrections. So we won't find out the full dynamics of what we explored down there until maybe a month or two down the road. So, but either way, I think it's great to get our name out there and, you know, our brochures out there and...
But if an employee that's sent there to recruit is part of their daily assignment, and somebody comes in, says, yeah, I talked to Mary Smith, and she's the one that got me interested, is this going to be a bonus situation for performing this while they're on duty?
Well, I would use like the HR booth at the county fair. You know, if Melissa goes out, Melissa's going to be the one that's at the county fair, you know, handing out, asking questions and stuff. You know, if by chance she gets 10 people that come in and recruit, I would see that as part of her job of HR. Same with Carrie. But what we're really looking for is current employees that are going out and finding their friends and family that would want to come in. And so when somebody in-processes, then we would ask them if they were recruited by anybody, and if that person says, yeah, I was recruited by, you know, Don Jones, then we would annotate that in the record and then track that employee. We can do that with our HR payroll system now, and then making sure that after six months, that person is still employed, and then, you know, that person, that current employee would be paid the incentive pay.
Yeah, just an observation, or a comment on that and an observation. I think you need to make it clear to the employees you send out on recruiting, that, okay, the bonus is not part of your duties.
Right, right.
And the other thing is, in 1978, I got recruited under a very similar program by a detective with Little Rock Police Department, and I did 28 years there and was pretty happy. And that program worked. I looked, there were five other people got hired with me, and three of us had been recruited by the same guy. But he just did a good job of going out and finding people.
Sure.
I don't think they paid $1,000 in 1978. But this sounds like a great incentive to get people in. And if you're working with your friends and your acquaintances, particularly if you've got a good employee, they generally know people that will be good employees, and incentivize, I think, is a very good idea.
Right. And that's why we thought that this was a great idea to incentivize our current employees because, you know, like you said, they may know somebody that's looking for a job and may not even think about, hey, why don't you work at Clay County? Whereas, you know, if there's some money in it for them, they might be more actively, you know, actively going out there and searching for people. So, good.
Commissioner Kaylee.
What budget line are these incentives being paid out of?
They would come out of the budget line for the department. So department personnel would be...
Just...
Just salaries, I think, is...
Yeah, if that's what you were asking. Each department would pay for their, the incentive pay.
Okay.
For who they were recruited.
And then, a while, a few minutes ago, you had said, if an employee has been here for a year, and then they recruit somebody, then they would be eligible. But in this policy that I'm looking at, it just says, any active employee.
Yeah.
Somebody is hired and they work for two months, and then they also recruit a friend, are they eligible?
I would say they would still be eligible, as long as they're an active employee. That would be correct. I probably misspoke there.
Just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Well, Commissioner Campbell and I did serve on the committee that discussed this, and we are hopeful that we will fill all the positions that we need and won't need to do this further down the road. But certainly, it's a challenging time, and if you look at the Human Resources page, there's a lot of unfilled positions, and hopeful this will spur some applications of quality employees. I know that having all current employees of Clay County eligible for this, they know great people that they can refer and spread the message. I do want to appreciate, I think, Carrie, your department were the original ones that did the flyer.
I copied her.
To hand out, but to have a QR scanner that will immediately take you to either, either the job opening or the HR page is really a way of streamlining that. I do want to say thank you for going to the fair. I think that's another important place for visibility, so thank you for that.
Yeah, the QR code is really cool. I just kind of found that myself, where the first one, it takes you to the employment page, the second one takes you to, if you want to sign up for when jobs are posted, it automatically news flashes you. I forget the actual technical term to it. And then on the back there is, you can, it'll take you right to the HR email. If you want to ask us a question or anything, you just scan that, it takes you right to the HR email. So all three of those are on the same page, it really works nice.
Those brochures were pretty big at our skills. If you guys don't know, skills is just kind of like a police academy, basically, in Alexandria that they have. But at that job fair, we were handing out those brochures, and that's all they were doing. They're just so technologically sound, these kids, and they were just pulling it up like, no, like, boop.
I know.
It was pretty neat.
Pretty amazing.
Pretty neat.
Anything else? Board wishes.
I move that we approve this program as outlined.
Motion from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the employee referral program as presented. Second from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? Further discussion? And just a clarification, this is a policy, not just a generic...
How long?
Commissioner?
Did you say how long it's going to last, or till you get down to six, you say?
We're going to reevaluate it at six months to see how many people were recruited from it, and then we'll reevaluate it at one year. So after one year, well, even after six months, if it's not working, then we can certainly discontinue it.
Thank you. And we did ask that you track, get as much data as possible to track this for the board to keep us updated periodically as to if it's what you're hearing.
Right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's. Thank you very much. Thanks, Carrie. Item four is the budget presentation for Human Resources. Mr. Brooke?
All right, thank you. Steve is handing out my personnel budget. I had thought you'd already gotten it, but I was mistaken. I think Colleen only gave me five minutes. I don't know how I'm ever going to get this done in five minutes, but...
Well, you got an extra minute.
I really, I really, my budget has not changed that much, aside from something that we'll be talking about later on in this board, is our kind of reorganization of the central admin department and my department. But as part of that reorganization, my budget doesn't change at all as far as personnel costs, though, go. So that all pretty much remains the same. As you know, I have Anna Moore, Melissa Young, and Kathy Ely that work for me. Kathy Ely works half-time for me and half-time for Solid Ways. If you go down my budget sheet, the biggest thing you're going to see is the new request of seven thousand dollars. And that's what I was talking about earlier, is that's an increase to a program that I'm looking at. It's an online program that is responsible, will help us with recruiting and onboarding. It's one system that will take it from the time the person puts an application in, all the way through to when we get them hired. And I know that the city of Morehead uses it, it's called Applicant Stack. City of Morehead uses it, and they really like it. It does a lot of things to streamline the process of onboarding and recruiting. And so the yearly cost to that is seven thousand dollars. Now, that can be reduced some, I think, because they charge us on an as-user basis. And so for some of the departments that don't hire very often, it's, we can change users around. So, and for instance, if corrections needs two or three licenses, we would probably take one away from a department that hardly ever hires. So that could come down if we reduce the number of users there. And the reason for that is, like I said, we're trying to streamline our hiring process. And also, right now, we have kind of a patchwork of things, because we use JotForm for our application, we use Seamless Docs for our onboarding and our forms, we use SharePoint to store the applications. And so it's kind of a hodgepodge that we've put together to make it work, but it's not overly efficient at this point. So that is the one new request that I have on there. Some of the other highlights here is on line sixty-two seventy-one. That was our optimum payment that HR was responsible for, our HR payroll system. Now that we have the new HR payroll system under UKG, Lori said that she's going to just put that whole amount into her budget and take it out of mine. So that's why it went down to zero. The other thing is on line sixty-three oh-two, when we were in this building, HR had its own copier, and that contract runs out at the end of the year. And so I, now that we've moved over to the government center, and there's other copiers over there that we can use, we're not going to renew that contract, so that saves us about twenty-five hundred dollars. And, let's see. The line sixty-two forty-four, advertising, the reason, that is the, what's called the Government Jobs USA, or GovernmentJobs.com, and that's the one that I talked about earlier, where we will make a posting on that, and it goes out countrywide. And that eighteen fifty is the yearly subscription. As you, as you know, each department will pay for their own advertising, but since this is a yearly subscription to USA jobs, I just have that coming out of my budget instead. And that's, this will be the second year that we've used that. And I think, that's, that's the biggest stuff on there, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, you said that seven thousand dollars that you're adding, maybe less. Could it be more, too?
No. We, we got seventeen licenses for that, and I don't think we'll need all seventeen. I think we'll actually reduce that count. Some of that has to do with setup costs, and then, let's see here. So it's fifteen dollars per month for a license. With the, with the application and the bundle, we get five manager log-ons, and then each additional license is fifteen dollars per month. I don't think that we would need all seventeen, because I don't think every department needs one all the time. Like, our assessors department, our planning and zoning, my department, I would use it, I would have to be the administrator, but some of the departments hardly ever hire, we would just take their user license and apply it to the departments that hire quite a bit.
Darren, based on your new request and ways, and areas that you've tweaked your budget, it really is only an addition to your budget of thirty-three fifty-nine.
Correct.
I mean, you've, you've cut areas elsewhere. The only thing I would say is, you know, I know you had two thousand in the budget for twenty-two, and changed that to eighteen fifty for advertising, and I really would really think we should use all of that in terms of advertising for positions.
The eighteen fifty is, is the yearly subscription for that. If we wanted to expand that advertising budget to other things, then that would probably go up some.
So, based on the twenty-two, though, that hasn't come out, is that billed elsewhere, or that's a multi-year?
It's, it's billed out once a year. So it probably hasn't been...
So your intent is that you utilize it?
Yes.
It just shows that it's not being utilized?
Right. We pay it once a year, and it's most likely at the end of the year. So it just hasn't come out yet.
Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
So the numbers we got here, they show, on this graph, it shows, for example, in column I, it's year-to-date, and that's through June, right?
Correct.
This is, this is why, I'm going to give you an example of why I didn't vote for the final budget last year. I appreciate the fact that you're showing it's less than a one percent increase in your budget. But for example, if we were to trend the same way for the last six months of the year, your actual would be three hundred and forty-four thousand. Now, I know there's probably some things in the June one that are probably not in there yet. I get that. But, but if you were to trend that same way, if you do the math, you take the one-seventy times two, you get an annual amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand. And you compare that, then, to the proposed twenty-twenty-three budget, it's a fifteen-point-one percent increase. I just bring, point that out as something that we need to, as we do these budgets, we need to keep in mind that we're, you know, we can't just compare these things to what was budgeted last year without taking into consideration actual. So I just, I just want to point that out. And I, I get it, I doubt that your final budget cost is going to be three hundred and forty-four thousand, I get that. Maybe it's going to be three hundred and seventy thousand. Maybe it's going to be what was anticipated as the three ninety-two. But until we get closer to seeing those actual numbers...
Mr. Larson?
Chair, Commissioner Campbell, one of the things I think we can look at, too, I think is, please keep in mind, as a board, that Lori kind of pulls these numbers as a, these aren't up-to-date as of right now. These were pulled back in probably the end of April, as far as, and so maybe from a confusion standpoint, we can look forward to either having one, the most up-to-date information in year-to-date, or not have it at all, to make sure that it doesn't...
Well, I'm assuming if they've got in here, it's June year-to-date numbers, it's June year-to-date numbers, I, you know...
I think the other piece is, it's important to note that in twenty-twenty and twenty-one, you were under, under budget, which I certainly appreciate, department heads that are coming in, operating department within their bounds. But I think that's, that's part of what Commissioner Campbell is talking about. We have, you know, the revenues over expenditures piece, or under budget, that still goes into the levy, and it's going into the general accounts. And certainly, it's, it's not, we can't anticipate it to be as low as if you just double what that number is, but it is less than what the total twenty-two budget is.
Yeah, and one of the big items is that other professional services, that's the HR payroll system that, that, so that'll actually show up in Lori's budget. So it's not necessarily, it's a decrease in mine, because I'm not paying a portion of it anymore.
I did, you know, I just finalized my comments. I did not, not vote for the year-end budget last year, because I didn't like what the department submitted. I had no problem with that. What I had a problem with was that we didn't take into consideration one and a half million dollars that was not spent of the previous budget. We didn't take that into consideration in the twenty-twenty-two budget, of which then made it appear, when you, when you look at proposed budget to last year's budget without considering the actual, you get a different percent increase. That's, that's all I'm saying here, is, you know, that if we want to have an eight percent increase, we need to be fair with the public and tell them what it was, and based on what the actuals were. And I'm going to continue to hound on that as we move forward. Thank you. I just wanted to bring that up early in this budget discussion, because I will keep bringing it up.
I usually do mine later.
Any further questions? Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Item five, today is a request to appoint Travis Bowden to the Board of Adjustment, our planning director, Matt Jacobson, and it looks like Mr. Bowden is here as well. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yeah, this is a request for a three-year appointment to the Board of Adjustment for Travis Bowden. The Board of Adjustment made their recommendation at the meeting last Tuesday to, to you all to appoint Mr. Bowden to a three-year term. I don't know, it's nice to have him here in person, I know that doesn't happen all too often, so if you have any questions for him at all, feel free.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
I'd like to start with, just, can you, for the public and for all of our board members, just to provide just a high-level view of what that board does?
Yeah, so the Board of Adjustment is a five-member board that comprises of citizens of Clay County that are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. And what the Board of Adjustment, what their primary duty is or responsibility is, is to hear variance requests to the Clay County Development Code. And so this would be if a person has a unusually shaped lot, or some feature of their property that does not allow them to do something that other nearby residents could do in the same zoning district, could, could do lawfully on their property. This gives them an avenue to, to seek, I guess, relief from, from the code, and, and yeah, I guess it's a state-created thing, every, every county has one, has a Board of Adjustment. And so, yeah, just, just provides that relief from the code if there's something unusual about, about their property.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Description, and, and thank you for being willing to step up and, and do your part as a citizen of Clay County. I think, I think this is a, is a very important position, a very important role that we, we have. And the reason I asked that is, is I want to make sure that, you know, even the people going into it are aware of what the issues are. I, I don't know you from before today at all, I know nothing about you, and I don't know what your experiences are that would qualify you to be in this position, because I do think it's an important position. And I just thought maybe you could share a little bit about yourself with us here, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, my name is Travis Bowden. I have spent, other than maybe five years or so, I've spent my whole life in Clay County. I graduated from Glendon, grew, I'm from Glendon. If anybody recognizes my last name, my grandpa was a land developer, and I spent many, many, many miles next to him, driving around, plotting land, hitting pins, you know, doing all that kind of stuff with him. Unfortunately, he's not with us today, but spent a lot of time doing it, and it was something he was very passionate about. And, you know, hopefully, maybe somewhere down the road, it is, allows me to find another position within the county and make my voice and people of the county heard.
Very good, thank you.
The Bowden addition on Highway ten, I think, is a lot of people are aware of that.
The one on Highway nine is the, you know, the main one, that most people kind of remember, but the one on ten is equally as important.
Well, if there's no other comments, I would, I would move the... Well, if there's no other comments, I would, um, I would move the, uh, a request to, um, fill that position.
A motion, uh, for Commissioner Campbell to appoint Mr. Bowden to the, uh, Board of Adjustment, a second from Commissioner Gross. I know this board has been unfilled for a while, so it will be nice to have a full, full slate of folks serving in that capacity. So I'm excited about that. Anything else? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
All right, thank you. We are slated for a five-minute break, so we will recommence at two twenty-five. It is two twenty-five. We did go ahead and pull item number seven earlier, so item eight this afternoon is a request for approval of the Resource Recovery Facility Construction Change Order Number Six and an increase to the Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract, our Administrator, Mr. Larson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. As you're certainly well aware, we've had many discussions over the last six, seven months about some of the challenges that we've had with the Resource Recovery, uh, project. Uh, one of those had to do with the weather. To kind of put this in perspective a little bit, in our contract, uh, with construction engineers, they have, uh, two weather events over the winter that they anticipate will shut us down for, for a couple of days. This past year, we had eleven. That was followed up by the wettest April in record, uh, here in Clay County. And so, uh, that's created some different challenges on the site. Winter conditions, uh, whether that's LP tanks, covering blankets to make sure that we can keep pouring cement. Uh, we also had a, uh, high-water table that's been discussed, uh, at this board. Uh, and so the challenge would be in the winter, that ran through the entire winter. Uh, and so, uh, anytime the pumps weren't running, that, uh, that ended up freezing up the area. And so, uh, we, we talked about over the last few months, significant, uh, water conditions and also some de-watering. And so, as we've continued through the project, uh, we've also had some different challenges with, I've been brought about by COVID with, uh, supply, uh, supply chain issues and delays of the project. Uh, and, uh, and so we've gotten to the point, as we've talked about, where our, both our contractor contingency and our owner contingency, uh, have been nearly depleted. And so we're looking at different ways, uh, to, uh, to get to the finish line. As we've talked about that, one of the items that construction brought, constructions engineers brought up as part of, uh, our discussion, uh, is there is a clause within the, in the contract that in the event, uh, that there are cer- certain delays that happen that are not, uh, not related to their work, uh, they are eligible to receive additional funding. Uh, and as you see, eight-point, three-point-one is highlighted, uh, within, uh, within this, uh, information sheet. And so over the last, uh, few months, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Mojo, Commissioner Campbell, myself, and former Solid Waste Manager, uh, Kirk Rosenberger have been ongoing conversations with construction engineers to come out with, uh, with an action plan moving forward. Uh, the request before you this morning, uh, would be, as we looked at, uh, we looked at all the items that were in the contractor contingency and identified different areas that could be, uh, could be connected to eight-point, three-point-one. Uh, there were additional items, but the items before you this morning, uh, were the winter conditions and also the de-watering, which totaled six hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Uh, in our, in our discussions with construction engineers, uh, the plan and the change order requested before you this afternoon, uh, would be, uh, would be transferring six hundred, or adding six hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, uh, from, uh, the reserve, uh, from the Solid Waste Department. Uh, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars of tho- those would go to the contractor contingency. And through our discussions, uh, with, uh, with construction engineers, they're going to allow seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars to the owner contingency. Uh, in review, in reviewing the, the documents of, uh, pending, uh, pending changes to the project and upcoming ones that we're aware of, um, that leaves a, a total of, in the owner contingency, uh, a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-one cents. Uh, and it also, I, provides a shift of a hundred and one thousand, four hundred and four dollars and forty-four cents into our, our contingency. And so, uh, and so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, I, Steve, I just want to clarify, first of all, uh, you just mentioned that they would come from solid waste reserves. Um, I, I guess I would disagree with that from the standpoint that, you know, talking with Lori, the total bonding package and everything that we had, including premiums and all those things, there, there are still those monies from the original finance plan that weren't necessarily dedicated and spent. So that's where the, that's where this, where I'm proposing that would come from, and that's where we've talked about that coming from. And that isn't to say that by the time we're done with this, based on some other things that might go on, we might not have to look at solid waste reserves. But at this point in time, I, it still falls within where we, where we're at in the whole financing plan. If you recall, there was one change order that was for five hundred and some thousand dollars to the good at one point in time when we removed that con, that, all that road, uh, stuff that was going to go down Thirty-Fourth Street and switch to Fifteenth. That was a half-million-dollar savings that Frank, you kind of, uh, talked about and pushed for, uh, early on in this. So there are some things that went on there, and I just want to point that out in terms of, of that. I'm going to the, um, going to the actual contract in eight-point, three-point-one. And, and again, Steve did mention it in there, uh, the numbers that, uh, construction engineers came, originally came up with, exceeded by quite a few dollars, that six hundred and seventeen thousand number. In our discussions and Commissioner Mojo and I and, and Steve, um, working with construction engineers, the six hundred and seventeen is what we agreed with would be appropriate at this point in time under eight-point, three-point-one. And that was the, you know, dealing with the weather conditions and that de-watering, which was unknown. Uh, as, you know, if you were to look at the language in eight-point, three-point-one, it also talks about other things, including pandemic issues. Uh, you know, which some of those things, we didn't get into that part of that conversation yet, but... Uh, so I just wanted to point out that, that, um, the original number that they were asking for was considerably more than that. And they agreed with us that, that this was an appropriate amount for now, including the split that we talked about, about the amount going to contractor contingency, which is then additional dollars that's at their discretion. The contractor contingency is at their discretion, how it's used. The owner contingency is at our discretion, just to remind everybody of that, so...
Questions, Commissioner Gross?
It indicated that there, there was two days billed into the contract and now it took up to eleven days because of poor weather. That shouldn't cost them any extra money, does it? Because there were eleven days that they couldn't work, that should...
Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Gross, I think I probably misspoke, uh, the, it's eleven events. And so for each event, in the contract, how they described us, they have two events, which, which is, uh, anywhere from four to six days. Uh, it, it costs, uh, it costs about fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, is what they have set aside in, in, in the original contract for those, those timeframes. And so, uh, the challenge that we face, uh, anytime that they shut down is you're, you're still paying for, uh, paying for, uh, the cranes. You're paying, you're still paying for the heating LP that's, that's going on so the project can continue when it, uh, when it, uh, when it gets warmer. And also, as I mentioned, some of that had to do with, uh, there are different times throughout, throughout this project where they were actually chipping away, uh, ice, uh, off of foundations, uh, to, to make sure they could do the work. So, so there is some work that still goes on, uh, and there are additional costs that, that do take place because of the machinery and the rentals that are already taking place.
Right, if, if I can, Commissioner Gross, I, you know, we've had these conversations and we, you know, we second-guess ourselves sometimes. And one of the things that, that we had asked is, would, would we have been better off just shutting that project down, you know, for two or three months during the real cold? And the fact of the matter is, is there would have been still significant costs that would have been tied to shutting it down. And, you know, and if you're going to shut it down for two or three months, then you also delay at the back end how, how soon it can open too. So you're kind of in a catch-twenty-two in some of those areas, so, um, yeah, I... Had, had we known the significance of those eleven severe events, uh, might we have made some different decisions possibly, but...
Right now, we're looking at December seventh to be completion date, or somewhere around there?
Yeah, in mid, in, yeah, early to mid-December is where the target date is right now.
So Steve...
Like I said, wishful thinking, but...
Steve, what you're looking for is a request for approval, uh, to item, uh, Change Order Number Six, but also then, uh, a separate motion to increase the GMP, correct?
Madam Chair, if you, if you look at the, the, uh, Change Order, it does, it does address the change or the increase of the GMP within the document, but however the board's wishes, uh, would, would like to handle that.
Madam Chair, I would move Change Order Number Six, increasing the GMP by six hundred and seventeen, four thirty-one with the, with the breakdown of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six thirty-two going to the Contractor Contingency and seventy-seven thousand, seven ninety-nine to the Owner Contingency.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve Change Order Number Six that would also in turn change the GMP, reallocating to different emotes. One to the Contractor Contingency, one to the Owner, from Commissioner Campbell, second from Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Item nine, this afternoon is a request to move forward with a reorganization of admin and HR departments to include a communications coordinator. We have our Administrator, Mr. Larson, and HR Director, Mr. Brock.
I'll thank you, Madam Chair, uh, probably a little over a year ago, uh, Colleen and I, uh, were in a conversation and, uh, she shared, uh, what, uh, she believed at that time to be her retirement strategy. Uh, and so, uh, as we've done with the...
We're not going to let her retire.
No, that's true.
Colleen just rolled her eyes at me.
Uh, and with a lot of our different departments, uh, when a plan has, has come forward or been notified, we, uh, we look at, uh, any opportunities to, to adjust, uh, adjust our, our staffing plans, uh, for that situation. And so, as Darren mentioned in one of his earlier, uh, presentations, currently, uh, Darren shares, uh, Kathy, our front, uh, front desk staff member at the Government Center with the Solid Waste Department. Uh, part of the plan from the beginning has been for, uh, when, uh, when the Resource Recovery Facility opens, that that position would transfer, uh, uh, out to that location. And so that with, again, as, as Commissioner Gross noted, uh, that's coming up here potentially at the end of the year, maybe a little later, but we're, we'll shoot for December now. Uh, and so we begin to kind of look at what, uh, what kind of impact do we have? The front, the front door at, uh, uh, number two at, at the Government Center does receive a, a number of, uh, visitors. Uh, we also, it's kind of a drop-off, and so it's, uh, uh, important to have somebody at that, that front window. So one of the things that we've identified is, is we also looked, is, uh, as Darren has talked about through his updates, is that we've seen some significant increases in personnel, uh, throughout the year. And while we've made adjustments, uh, through onboarding and, and different things, we've, uh, tried to, uh, to digitize some, some other things. There's still a great, uh, great need of, uh, I guess some additional help for, for Darren. And so, uh, what, what we would, what we look to do is, is to, uh, add, uh, one, change it from a, uh, grade-five, uh, position. Uh, Kathy's position right now is, is a lot of phone, answering the phones, uh, copying and filing, scanning. Uh, and this would be more of a, not an HR generalist, but a, a position with... H, H, HR admin. And so, uh, we would be looking, uh, looking to, uh, make that adjustment. Uh, the, the person who, uh, with the other half of that position that's paid by Solid Waste, uh, we would look for, for my budget to pick that up. As Darren mentioned, uh, on, based on, based on the, the changes within his organization and Kathy, uh, based on her longevity, there would be about a two-hundred-dollar, uh, two-hundred-dollar difference in, in where the current position is at to making that adjustment to line, to line ten. When we look at, uh, look at the, the half of the, from, that would come from human or from the administration, with Colleen have, Colleen's longevity, even that, uh, changing, uh, to the part we haven't talked about yet, uh, but changing a, a different role, there would be a, a savings, uh, in that position for twenty-twenty-three, uh, which would bring the annual, uh, cost to, to about seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine, nine dollars. The third component of this adjustment, uh, would be, uh, would be adding a, a communications specialist. I think there's a handout, uh, within your file. Uh, one shows the existing staffing, uh, exact, existing staffing plan, uh, and then the proposed staffing plan. Uh, this person would still be located out of the area where Colleen, uh, is currently at. Uh, it would be shifted to a grade-eighteen, it would still participate in our staff, uh, excuse me, our board meetings. But they would also then work on coordinating communications, not just for my department, but also other departments within the county. Uh, they would look to, to write letters and press releases, uh, as, uh, as needed. Uh, again, uh, making sure that they run, run through my office. They also provide some, uh, social media posts to highlight some of the positive things, or many of the positive things that are happening that maybe right now, we don't have the time to do that. Uh, one of the things that Colleen, uh, does currently is the bits of clay and looking at, is there different ways, uh, that we can do that? Uh, and also any promotional material creation, uh, that, that can, can come. Again, this wouldn't be, uh, the, as far as, as far as, uh, speaking to the public, that would continue to be my role. Uh, but, uh, this position would look to, to create, uh, that information content, not just for myself also, but for some of the other, other counties. Again, or excuse me, other departments. Uh, and again, if you, if you look at, and look at the necessary, the changes that we made, uh, we're addressing issues within Darren's department, uh, also, also, uh, the administrative area. And I think that, uh, the communications coordinator would be a nice addition, uh, to, to highlight and, uh, many of the things that are happening here at Clay County. With that, I would yield for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Board questions? Questions? Wishes?
I think, um, adding this communications coordinator, uh, is really going to be beneficial to the public. Um, there are so many things going on in the county. Um, when I'm talking to residents, um, that's one of the biggest questions, is what, what all does the county do? Well, this and this and this and this and this. So, um, having a person who really specializes in communicating clearly, um, and accurately through different mediums, I think is going to be, yeah, a tremendous benefit to the county and to our different departments in, um, sharing information. So, I will happily, um, make a motion to approve these organizational changes.
Motion from Commissioner Kaylee to approve the proposals, a second from Commissioner Evinger. Discussion. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, normally, normally I would like to, um, see, because this is basically a new request in the budgeting process. And, and normally, we accept all the new requests and then we take them into consideration after we've seen them all. Uh, however, because of the, some of the current, um, structures and, um, you know, retirements and resignations and what have you, sometimes you just have to advance some of those opportunities, um, sooner on in the process. Uh, I, I say that because I am typically one who, who won't support this until we see it all. But this is, this is an exception to that, and I just want to, to point that out, uh, so I don't appear to contradict myself in my vote.
Thank you. Did you have a comment? Yes, Commissioner Evinger?
Yeah, I, I feel good about this for a couple of reasons. We, uh, live in an age where the, the call for transparency and information from government entities is, is under a lot of scrutiny. I don't think we've ever hit anything. Uh, I don't think we, we, uh, do a bad job of communicating with the public, but we can only expect so much out of you, Steve. And most of that has been in your lap. To have somebody, in my experience, in this area as an executive, to have somebody whose job is to basically lay eyes on what we're doing and what the information is, and be available and, and communicate with the media and with the public. And I imagine this is going to have some things to do with, with, uh, with public requests for data and information. These are all things that, when you need them, you need them, and it's not a time to have to try to work that into a schedule that's already very busy and dense. So I think... and dense. So I think this is a good call. I think this could be a very valuable employee for just helping you gentlemen get your jobs done.
Any further discussion? There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Item 10 this afternoon is committee reports. Commissioner Evinger, would you like to start?
Yeah, other than last Tuesday, attending the employee picnic and with the rest of the commissioners, helping serve our great employees, and it was a great event, we're very appreciative of the people we have that work in this county. Other than that, it was a week with a holiday, and I didn't have any meetings. I kind of feel bad about that. Something's wrong about that.
Rest is okay. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Okay, yeah, the picnic was great, and we had a good turnout. It was, we had a beautiful day, and I was glad to see a lot of our employees get out and socialize together. On the 29th, we had a finance committee meeting, and the items discussed there. Let's see, we, we kind of further discussed the, the, the primary focus was on the financing for the-
Detox.
Detox facility. I keep wanting to make sure I get that right between detox and dispatch, because they both start with D. But anyway, so we, you know, we talked about where we're at with that, and so with the million, $5 million grant that we got, and with the board's willingness to reserve 7.5 million of the ARPA money, we're at 12.5. The, the construction cost right now estimated to be 13.9 million, so we're, we're short about 1.9 million, if I did my math correctly. And, and with that, or one, yeah, 1.1.1.1.1.5 million. And with that, we, we talked about the opioid settlement money, and there was some, some discussion amongst public health and with social services about what the need might be for some of those opioid monies outside of just using it for bricks and mortar. So after, after considerable discussion, what we, what we came to in a comment on that finance committee was, was bringing to you and suggest that, that half of that money from the opioid could go towards the detox facility, and the other half kind of being left in reserve for other issues that might be coming up. And I, you know, I think we certainly felt that that was very appropriate for now. And so with that in mind, you know, I, I think we're, you know, we're getting very close to where we would need to be with, with funding that facility without the need to go to our levy for any additional dollars. And we, I think Commissioner Mojo and I were pretty strong on trying to figure out ways to do that in this process, but there still is a little bit short. If we need to, I know Rhonda in Social Services has talked about the potential for some reserve dollars within hers that could maybe make up some little shortfall in that regard too. So, so that was the, pretty much focus on that. And then having that been determined, I think Administrator Larson, I think you're going to be bringing forward, I think next week, a potential contract discuss, some contract discussion moving forward to take the next step. So I think that's, Commissioner Mojo can add to that too, if she cares to. So I think we're looking at RFP discussion next week. I just, if I can, a little bit with our last discussion, and it was brought up about social media and those types of things, I want to, I've been doing this for quite a while as a, as a commissioner, and, and one of the things that, that I've always taken pride in, and this board has taken pride in, is the fact that we're nonpartisan. We're in an election cycle right now, and I think it's important with the changing that's going on, we have, we all have our own personal pages on the media. I happen to have a county commission reelect page on there myself, and I think we need to really avoid, as commissioners, using a county commission page to be using the term tagging or referencing other people running for state office. I think it's going, I think it's taking us away from being nonpartisan. I don't think it's done intentionally, but I think we need to start watching that. This is new. This whole social media thing is a new thing going on, and I just think when we, for example, if I were to tag somebody who was running for Senate on one side in our district or in the House, and I, and I tagged them, you know, or promote their page, it can be viewed as an endorsement. And the problem that I have with that is that we all end up having to work with whoever wins. And I just think it, I think it's just in the best interest that we try to avoid promoting, those are partisan races. Let's be clear, those are partisan races, and ours are not. And I, I still believe we need to, to operate in a nonpartisan fashion here. And that's just a, something that I see going on, and I would like us to, like to discourage that, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Gross?
I'm in the same situation as Commissioner Evinger. I was just, county picnic is my only thing that I was at last week, and appreciated all the employees coming out there, but we need more people to eat veggie burgers, so. Get rid of them, or cut back, cut back on them, or whatever. But other than that, I really appreciated all the employees showing up. It was good to see them again. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Thank you. I didn't have any meetings, but I did want to note that Public Health has started offering vaccinations for all ages six months and up. I was able to bring my youngest in for a vaccine, and she was very excited to get a glow bracelet when she was there. So if anybody is looking for appointments to get those vaccinations or boosters for COVID, you can go to claycountymn.gov, click on COVID-19 information, and then vaccine information. Or you can call the vaccine hotline number, which is 218-299-7204, and those vaccines are being offered on Wednesdays. Public Health is still updating their COVID-19 statistics on the website as well. There has been a bit of an uptick again with positivity rates at our vault site. I noticed this week when that was sent out, it's been hanging around that 20% positive rate for the last couple weeks. And then lastly, again, not a meeting, but last night I was able to volunteer with the Morehead Business Association to help out with safety at their fireworks event at the Horizon Shore Park. It was a wonderful night. It was so great to see the community gathered with smiles on their faces, celebrating the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you to all who came out and participated and celebrated together.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Last week, I attended the planning commission meeting, which was a long one. I will say before I report on it, there was issue with the team's link that had been advertised, and while we did have in-person responses from citizens, there was maybe one or two citizens that were not able to address the board virtually as we had either planned and they had hoped. So we will be reopening a hearing to allow the public to do that. It certainly was just a mistake in terms of, you know, how those long links can get, just making sure that we're allowing the public to address if needed. That evening, we did have several requests for amendments to conditional use permits for one, two, three, four of our solar garden applications that had been permitted a year ago with supply, demand, and challenges to get the supplies needed to build those facilities. They were up against a deadline for their permit, so we did approve an amendment to extend that, those dates. We did have a request for an interim use permit to replace an existing ready-mix concrete batch plant in Spring Perry Township from Terracan Precast, and a very lengthy discussion about that, and, and certainly there, there are concerns with that. In turn, what they're doing is expanding the ability to keep different batches of concrete in hold, so that you don't have to completely flush the entire system to change the mixes that are there. Certainly, Terracan has grown substantially, and exciting to see that growth in Clay County. It was, and continues to be whenever we have requests from the Hutterite Colony. That road is, they do a great job of maintaining and certainly have put in a huge amount of material on the road to maintain it. You know, I, I think we're at the point, and two of you are on the, the highway tracking facility, or committees, you know, several years ago, there, the leader of the colony did say, hey, if we're worried about the road, let's have some discussion about the road. If, if we need to upgrade the road, if we need to put dollars in, we're there. It's, we really have continued to make the best with conditions on those permits and discuss that. And so, our county engineer, Justin, was part of that discussion, and he really did say, that's, that's really discuss this further, if we need to include it on our long-range plan or whatever, but it's, it's time to have those discussions. So that request did pass. There was a second piece, interim use permit for the intentional community application that we had changed the code to allow. That was part, part of an action that this board had taken. We approved that there was a request for a condition, conditional use permit for conditional storage business on 90th Avenue South. That did, was approved. And there was another request for an interim use permit amendment in terms of a gravel pit that was permitted earlier in the last year in Humboldt Township. The road that was identified as the primary hauling route is really a minimum maintenance road, and, and both township, county officials have determined that that's not a safe application. So we did hear from residents on that one, and I think if I'm right, that might be the citizens that had wanted to apply or take part virtually, but we did conditionally approve that piece. And then there was a conditional use permit in Elkton Township for a warehousing and wholesale business that was approved. And then the final one was a rezoning to remove a resource protection aggregate overlay zoning on a parcel in Townsend. And then furthermore, we will have the aggregate overlay subcommittee meeting of that committee coming in the next, next month. I also attended the detox financial plan discussion. Certainly appreciate all of the parties that were at the table to help us figure out how to piecemeal together such a vitally important program. Really feel like we're making good headway and certainly doing the best we can to make sure that we're able to construct a facility that will not have a major effect on the levy. And, and certainly as this board, hopefully, we will approve the request for RFP at the next, our next board meeting. We'll really have a fairly good understanding of, of what the financial plan needs to look like once we receive those proposals. Certainly, we have estimates, but once we have hard, hard facts in terms of dollars, we can make better plans. And then we did have the ARPA committee meeting met, met just briefly. Commissioner Campbell did have a prior engagement and had to leave. It was basically just reconvening to discuss the actions that this board had, has taken in terms of the money that we're earmarking for future potential needs, the money that this board has, had approved to set aside for detox pieces. If I'm forgetting any things, Steve, make sure and let me know. And then we are continuing to advertise for our Solid Waste Director, so apply for that if you are interested. That concludes my report.
You don't get the $500.
No, I know. And I think for the record, I did suggest to Commissioner, to Steve, that we make sure that that was part of it. And also, a huge, huge thank you to the staff members that took time out of their day Tuesday to set up for the county picnic, and those who stayed after to make sure and clean up. That is always such a highlight for me personally, to see all the wonderful people that work for Clay County. It's, it's, it's really a great thing that we do.
I think it's worth the admission to see Kurt Campbell doing his, his little dance moves while he's cooking. Remember that next year when you want to come to the picnic, you get a, you get a sideshow besides.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I participated in the county picnic last Tuesday. Again, just to reiterate what everyone said, thanks to Darren and, and all the other staff that were extremely helpful in, in making that happen. It's a, it's, it's my favorite day of the year. We also, that afternoon, I had a Highway Department pre-budget meeting. They'll be coming before this board next week. Also had a web meeting later this month. I'll be participating at AMC Technical Days, talking about onboarding new commissioners, one of the events that they're having, so we just had a meet, pre-meeting on that. On the 29th, I met with Derek LaPointe, just got an updated information on the, on a series of shared incidents, issues here within the county. One of the things that they did say is that I know he's been before our board earlier this year, talking about the Moritz Center Mall area and, and the development that's potentially happening there. It sounds like by early August, there's going to be a presentation before the Moritz City Council, and he has said that both he and Roers would be willing to also come to the county to update all of you. Let's see, on the 29th, we had an information system service pre-meeting. Again, they'll be coming next week. We had a HR pre-meeting, finance committee, which has been well addressed, also an ARPA committee on the 29th, which has been addressed. On the 29th, a department head evaluation. We had a budget pre-meeting on, with Rory Schmitz. We also discussed, after that meeting, we had a separate meeting on MCT, put out a cybersecurity self-assessment. And while I feel very good about the systems that we have in place here within Clay County, this is another way that MCT offered a resource for us to look at ways that we can strengthen our organization data and network safety. And so it's something that we're going to continue to do with Rory on an annual basis. On the 30th, I met with Matt Evans from Burns and McDonald, just provided some updates with the landfill project. Happy to report that as of last week, the boiler was now working, and so we've had a heck of a time getting, getting that done. They're going to be working on the, the gas project that you guys recently approved here over the next couple of weeks. The good news is, is Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo, Commissioner Campbell have been pushing for, for timelines. We got a timeline potentially targeting August 5th as our substantial completion, with total completion looking at being done by October 31st. And so, the important thing for, for us to remember as a substantial completion date, that's when our one warrant, one-year warranty starts. And so, that, that is good that we're, we're getting to that point with this project. And then on Friday, the 1st, participated in the, in continued discussions with the Red River Regional Dispatch Center with, in regards to the layout of the building, and I think, again, hope to be having that in front of the elected officials in the very near future. With that, I conclude my report.
Anything further? If not, we adjourn.